Let's go ahead and call this meeting.
Mark, can you do a roll call please?
Brad Castor.
Here.
Dan Eddy.
Here.
Lisa Hatch.
Here.
Joseph Nelson. Clayton Gordon.
Here.
Elaine Ury.
Here.
Elaine, do you have ladies and gentlemen questions please?
Certainly. Father, we come before you tonight, just want to thank you for the guidance that you give. Of course, I just ask for more wisdom to deal with situations. And Father, we just pray that you would help us to stay on the high road, Lord, and do what's good for the town of Ranjly, and help us to make those decisions to keep that going in that direction. And Father, we just ask that your help in financial needs and direction and things that should show up for us to deal with. We thank you for a counsel, Lord, that cares about you. And we just ask all these things for Jesus' sake.
Peter, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody cut minutes from me from Denver, yea. Is there any question? Item F, Elaine Ury, proposed in seconded motion as well. I need a correction. Go direct.
Item?
Item F, we do business in a minute.
Oh, okay.
She proposed a motion in seconded motion.
Yeah.
All voters proposed a motion.
Okay.
You couldn't do that.
I'll make another nap again. Plus, you can take it again, sue again. Take it out there.
Any other questions? Can I accept a motion without? Aye. Accept. In a minute, so this is permitted. I'll second that motion. Motion by Dan, a second by Joe. Any further comments? All in favor, say five, say aye. All both same time, motion passed. Tissue to public input. Anybody wants to say anything to the council? Well, next to public hearing, but that's not set till 7:30. That's been long to?
It's changed, changed to the end.
Or changed to the end, excuse me.
Yeah, we're gonna add the help of slicker license renewal.
Okay.
And in your packets, we had, I noticed tonight as an author, we had two copies of the seven billion program here.
Yeah, I saw that, two different sections.
Yeah.
That it, that's it, okay. Any committee or board meeting, board meeting reports?
No.
Okay. Supervising.
Just a few things. Did the AGSC meeting last week? We always, since we hired a lobbyist, we do legislative review of some of the bills that could affect the community's life grounds. Some things that came up were the cost of providing public records under the Public Records Act. Apparently, there's been some communities on the eastern slope that have just been hammered, what people call that, requesting records, reams of records that be copied and sent to their address. And so, there's a bill on the table to require a charge in advance of processing of records requests like that. Email requests for those same documents would still be at no charge. So, that's one of the bills that is coming up. And actually, CML supports that, the position of the sponsor of that bill. Randy Baumgartner is our senator. He's proposed a bill, remember when Bastard was passed, which required charges for renewals on license registrations if you were late. So, you'd have late charges that accumulate every month. Under his bill, because it seemed to be a pretty unpopular provision of that bill, he's introduced a bill that would eliminate the fee of $20 per month to a flat fee of $20 should you have a late registration. And he says, and repeals an exemption from a late fee for vehicles that expire temporary registration number plates, tags, and certificates. So, he's trying to lower the overall cost to the average citizen. And I think some of the ranchers are eating it pretty hard on that one. They got trailer stuff in the back that they have license for one on. They get them on the highway, all of a sudden, several hundred dollars off. Elaine, you're correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for a $20 license.
Yeah, for a $20 license. If it don't happen to come in the mail, you know, you gotta file it, yeah.
Here's a really important one coming up. And Ranjly ought to keep their ears to the ground, so on this one. Roundabout turn lanes, change signals. So, they got exempt vehicles traveling within a roundabout from requirements of signal lane changes. So, if you ever get caught in a roundabout with mobile lanes, if they pass this bill, you won't have to use your turn signals.
Well, we need to have it on our roundabout frequently.
Yeah.
What Democrat wrote that one?
I'm not sure. I didn't look at the sponsor on that bill.
We don't have anything more important to legislate than turn signals or roundabouts.
Dan, of all the things that we've got to be worried about, they're also looking at a fire inspection for marijuana cultivation sites. This bill would require ship. Hey, this could impact somewhere close to.
There'd be much people ready for the fire.
Also, does that, you put a windsock, that's so they don't lose direction yet?
Gonna be down a wind tunnel. Anyway, the fire is a local fire department to annually inspect every medical marijuana site optional, that has optional cultivation premises, once a year. So, they have to build a good fire inspection. I think this is kind of a deterrent in some ways, but each inspection fee is limited to $100 per inspection. I don't know if that's gonna go anywhere. There's also a unionization bill for firefighters that's on the table. And it won't affect us, but it affects Steamboat Springs and some other communities that have more than 50 firefighters. So, those are some of the things. The biggest item that was discussed in the AGSC meeting is, we talked about Frank was at the community networking meeting today, but it was regarding the resource management plan and I don't know if it's being put forward by BLN. And I don't know, Joey might be familiar with this, but it's a pretty painful looking bill.
They're coming in.
Yeah. If it passes, I think it's gonna be severely impacting our economy. But it'll restrict access to current leases. They want to eliminate, eliminate the vacuum facilities, vibration bonds. They want to eliminate new pipeline cores, wider appeal office area, unilateral modification of leases. So, BLN wants to be able to modify leases that are already on books without input from the leaseholder. Impractical air quality standards. They want to step in between Colorado Department of Public Health and the UCF. BLN wants to make those air standards more stringent and take over the responsibility of monitoring. Reclamation standards that are completely unacceptable. And they want to make those retroactive. They want to find most of these standards over 90 to 100 percent of the entire field and they're pregnant, they have the ability to, apparently to, you know, make, or have some flexibility in some of these determinations. And so, if they put all this in writing, it, I've got it on my shelf. It's three volume document, couple thousand pages. Took them five years to write it, then they're giving the county and others 90 days to respond to it. You see the letter, the packet going out from Frank regarding the amendments and the 28th is the deadline for those kinds of responses. So, most of the public meetings have already been held. Anyway, that was a big topic. Sean Bolton, in fact, all three of the commissioners are meeting tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock with BLN to go over all 22 of the articles or how do they refer to them? In a different language, 22 different plan options, I think, with the, but I might not, I don't know. They think it's gonna, they want to go through every single one and kind of mark it up with the. This is kind of a white river field office.
So, are they gonna start earning money so I can go on unemployment?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Well, the passage is.
Pay taxes so I can just go on unemployment.
The passage is in a fair format. I mean, it literally would be devastating.
Well, we've got some people south of town here. These little gas wells, we're making 50 MC up a day or whatever in Canada. These little operators, keep those going. They're either gonna have to plug them, and then they're talking about the strangest reclamation on that, it's just gonna be devastating. You do all the jobs lost, the companies just living elsewhere to do their business.
Exactly, they'll go elsewhere. Is that what they're trying to do?
This is.
That's what I feel, that they're trying to push us out here.
Well, that's what we.
Actually, the commissioners feel the same way. They're kind of like to me, and Sean's kind of like to me, was that no other field office is implementing and taking such unilateral action. I almost, I almost sometimes feel like we're a test of beta site for these rules and regulations that we're trying to implement to see because of our rural nature, whether to get them implemented. You know, that's, that's.
Does there be a long guy at the meeting today?
No.
No, they don't have that kind of career.
I don't know if that's true or not. The other, some of the other things that Al's coming out in the next utility building with a kind of a scenario of freezing pipes and what the homeowner should be doing. And before they, before they call town hall, if it's within their own areas, but you know, things like water shut off, getting air circulation and that thing.
How many we did freeze so far?
Well, we were getting, probably last week, it seemed like they had quite a few calls, two, three calls a day coming out. Most of those that went out were, you know, after the beer, within the homeowner's property. They had to shut their water off after they had a broken pipe or something. You know, we're helping them out as much as possible and trying to talk it through.
Of course, I frostbite that now, did you?
Well, I don't know exactly. Mike and I talked about that this morning. He thought that once things start to heat up a little bit, it'd grab that frost will go over into the ground. So, with the insulation that we currently have on the ground, he didn't think it was too deep, but.
Oh, it looks like it's starting to moisten the ground when it started snowing.
That's awesome.
Said it was about 6,200 feet, we're below that frost.
Feels like we're.
Yeah, boy, yeah. In February, we'd kind of like to do something a little special for the employees. We have dinner for employees. We checked into having Riff City, our induction caterers of barbecue, Riff and a number of different minivans, baby back ribs, smoked chicken, sliced barbecue beef bourree. They did a great job, and then to one of their cater events. We'd like to schedule something where the council, like we did last year, where we get the council at an hour, take a two hour lunch, get all the employees, council just get together and have lunch together. Is that, the cost looks like 45 people, we're looking at about $760.
I personally think it'd be a good deal. Last year, I think our staff did, I think we done, we asked a lot out of them, and we had a lot of conversation. I think pretty small, too, really. And it gives everybody a chance to socialize and give us a chance to visit with the town employees and vice versa. And see that we are this small people, where most of us are, you know. Meet the path, but.
I think you got a pretty busy lunch.
I'm, I'm all for it.
Is there any particular time in February that's?
When it warms up.
Do you want to go for the latter part of February?
Yeah, let's do.
Okay. I know with certain more hours travel schedule, it's kind of this kind of big problem.
Probably on the 22nd, 23rd, and then I bet it looks a good deal in Trinidad. I don't know the exact date, 27th or 28th or something, business down there on Proppi.
The 20th, maybe you're.
20th?
It's like a good name, isn't it?
27th looks really good. 20th would be good.
Is that a potential, but is everybody else in favor of the business?
Mike, you probably do it on Friday, that's about the only idea I've got.
Are you okay, Mike, yeah?
I'm sorry.
We haven't, that'll be.
What about the 15th?
I think I'm gonna ask me the issue that we got, 18th, 19th, 21st, 22th, put out a list of my folks in Arizona.
Well, 15th is my Friday off, Clayton's Friday off.
How about the 15th?
If I have any conflict, he doesn't.
15th.
15th.
No guarantees, no shit.
Okay.
You don't remember that, can you?
That's hard to say. That's really hard to say.
We'll make sure you get it.
Send a solid reminder.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Soon as we find out.
They're big food, I'm fighting.
I'll be there. I'm not good food.
The Optimum rider cable that we had, that your folks approved last meeting, Vicky, right, talked to this, but the residents down there are having a lot of difficulty with their current service. So, I think they'd like us to reconsider what we're doing on cable down there. Because Optimum also, I think Vicky's thought was when we approved it last time, we approved the base of package for all 24, 25 residents down there, white river village, cable. And then they can individually upgrade if they want to. Well, after Vicky talked to them, after the meeting, the next day, Optimum indicated that, no, nobody could upgrade, that's the package, that's all they get. And it's really a limited package. And so, we're looking into direct and dish, see what, see what it would take, a decent provider.
I don't know if I think we could go probably two dishes to cover.
It would probably be three, because they can package 10 apartments to one dish.
Okay. I mean, that still would be too much.
So, we're, we're not there yet.
And most of the residents are for this meeting?
Depending on if we can get it, yeah, they were all, there was more in favor than not, so.
That depends on the cost though, right?
It's $19.95 for them to do the direct TV.
That's for your basic package.
Yeah. And then that way, they can upgrade if they want to, for reals.
But I, I mean, that's a lot for some people on fixed income. But I don't think you're gonna get any kind of service for any of us. We can fight this cable nonsense that we've been going through for years, and we still have nothing. At least they get a good picture, and they do have some channels.
Yeah. And right now, Optimum has seven stations off because they're doing contracts discussion between Optimum and the station itself. So, they have seven stations less than they did right now.
Do we currently pay for that service then?
They pay for it.
Or do they pay, each individually pay for them?
They pay us, and then we pay the Optimum.
And what are they paying now?
Four hours.
$7.60 now.
That's right.
They are paying the raise, yeah.
But, you know, I realize $11 might be kind of steep for a few of them, but. That's just life anymore.
It is life.
Are we gonna have any extra costs for the satellites or anything?
No, it'll be, it'll be a dish that'll sit on the ground. It won't be a big commercial thing.
Okay.
So, they could just, 10 apartments to each one is the difference.
And do they provide the receivers for that, for setup? Okay.
I don't know about that, Vicky. The additional costs, because I think they have to look at our cabling. I think, I don't think we can say they.
It's like a little receiver thing that's on the end of your little dish, and then there's the box in the box.
Yeah.
I suspect there's gonna have to be a new cable route, because most satellite, satellite cable will not, or satellite signal will not go through no cable collax.
That's, that was the last thing we looked into this a few years ago. I think they were gonna.
Have they required it?
They're gonna require that we install.
Go ahead.
But, just to get back to, at that time, there was about a $5, $8,000 cable expense to the dish, to the equipment, about that. I don't want to say anything about pricing yet, because we don't have any information on that.
Go ahead, move on to new business. We'll skip item A and B and go to item C. Discussion and action to approve the new banner for Main Street, Northern Lights Display, which includes two designs for a total of $7,000. Discussion.
Have we seen any of these?
There are.
Well, yeah, that's just, I mean, that's, we haven't seen the material or anything else, right?
No.
We've just seen what they have on paper.
It's what they're quoted, I talked to her about the material.
Yeah. What's a five year, warranty five year? Was it five?
Yeah, three, wasn't it?
Three. Now, it's on.
They're the five year. Five year. Yeah.
Yeah, it was just three years.
I think they look good. I think it's an addition to our talent.
I like the change from Derek from the first yard, I like that change.
Put it to that, nice that, sort of white trash.
These colors have been copy well, and we have a much more vibrant green than this. I think that the last pack, we also had more realistic, beautiful colors in it. But we're one with two color banners on both.
What, where are they coming out of the budget?
These are coming out, I can check it out.
Okay.
Any other motion, if anybody's.
I'll make a motion to approve the new banner for Main Street for the amount of $7,500.
I'll second.
Motion by Brad, second by Elaine. Any further discussion? All in favor, say five, say aye. All both same time, motion passed. Item D, discussion of action to appoint Susan Fields to the planning zoning commission for a two-year term.
I'm making motion to appoint Susan Fields to the planning zoning commission.
I'll second.
Motion by Brad, second. By Lisa. Any further discussion?
Suzanne won't be here tonight, she had another meeting, so. She's crossed over to the library and the club meeting.
No further discussion, all in favor, say five, say aye. All both same time.
I have a question on this. Were we making appointments to this commission? Is there a way for us to make appointments for somebody to get off that commission?
It's a two-year term without, right?
That's right.
Two years are done.
Unless they resign.
I would just like to know who is actually.
Who has the authority to remove someone?
Yeah, or if there's somebody else that's terminated out that hasn't been brought to anybody's.
There's no term on it, so.
Well, just, well, it just says it's a two-year term.
But the. It's just an account of terms, I agree with you, if there's no. Susager.
But do we, does the council have the authority to ask a person to step off on those?
I think so. I mean, you have the appointment authority. I put in the section of the code referring to the appointments.
Members, according to that, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 15, the members that are in the group of success, we're gonna call them like the two of you. So, it's in the three-year term. If somebody else was interested, I guess, maybe there would be a trust, and then you. So, if you want to redefine that part.
Says members may be relocated by the town council at any time, but you play it for the ten people attending the meetings.
So, it's got stipulations on it?
Or for any other good cause related to performance of duties.
Let's go back to number eight, public hearing.
Can I say it one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're gonna schedule a planning zoning meeting for the department of officers that may currently appoint the chair, the co-chair, director of committee. So, if anybody wants to attend, I guess we will advertise that meeting in case you'd like to be there for that.
Let me know, I'll be there.
What meeting is that, it's hard?
For planning zoning. Rick Brady is right now the chair of that committee.
Public hearing on special event, Wicker License, CNCC, and Wild Game Dinner. It's gonna be a good week, the 2nd, 2013. And I don't think we've got anybody in the audience that has any concerns about that. And we'll get to it very soon. Item D, public hearing on special event, Wicker License, Rain and Timber Conference, and the Cat Cramp Crack, which will be scheduled for April 9th of this year. And again, I think everybody might have a point. So, I guess we can move on back to new business. Discussion and action to approve special event Wicker License for CNCC, Wild Game Dinner on the 2nd of February. Kelsey, would you like to come up to the podium there and kind of explain what's going on? And what it's for?
I have plenty of this, or did everybody hear me?
You can read.
Okay.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Kelsey Lickus. I am the lead advisor for the Spartan Times Student Newspaper. And this is the fourth annual Wild Game Dinner that they will have. And the funds that it generates are used to send the, generally the core staff, which are the editors of the newspaper, to the national conference, which this year is in San Francisco. So, we like to raise as many funds as we can so we can maybe do something fun while we're there as well. And we thought maybe if we could sell some beer and wine, that we would generate some more funds to do so.
And I will see if there will be people watching to make sure no minors are watching.
Yes, we will have, we'll card people at the door and give them a favorable stand or some kind of education for that they're a minor or over 21. And then there will be people working the table of the beer and wine to make sure.
Anyone else have any questions?
I think it's a great thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the special liquor license for CNCC's annual Wild Game Dinner.
I'll second.
Motion by Lain, and second by Brad, to approve the special liquor license for the Special Game Dinner. Any further discussion? All in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time?
Say aye.
Uh, motion passes. Thanks, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Enjoy the Wild Game.
Well, you should all certainly come.
I'm sorry?
You should all come. I know you're gonna be gone, so...
I'll be out of town. Okay, next item, discussion of action to approve special event liquor license for Ring and Chamber of Commerce, then the Crab Crack on two nine thirteen. Brooke, would you like to get up and give a little speech, please?
Yes, we will be doing the Crab Crack on February ninth. We've sold almost all three of their tickets. I guess we would get to explain to the people why they can't have beer and alcohol.
You guys have beer and wine, is that great?
Beer and wine, correct, and we have the vendors who check IDs, do all that good stuff.
Okay. The last two years I've been there, it wasn't great, I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, no, as far as I know, nothing's ever gone out of control, kind of watch that or get it bad. Everybody seems to be on their rest periods that night.
Do you have any question, Brooke?
What?
You have that a lot, I guess.
I have.
What was that?
People are too busy eating crab, they can't get that. They can't eat too much, they're too full. Six hundred pounds of crab.
How much crab is a...
Six hundred pounds?
What's everybody else gonna eat, like...
I know, well, my table, I'm pretty sure he's, you know, get three hundred of it, so...
I'll make a motion to approve liquor license for the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Sir Crab Crack.
Sit down. Motion by Brad, second by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time?
Say aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you.
And the next item on the new business will be for the liquor license for the elves at Ford Insurance, there's no problems, and he recommends that we go ahead. Any discussion?
Make the motion to approve the elves' liquor license.
I'll second.
Motion by Brad, second by Lain. Any further discussion? All say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Motion passes. Okay, I guess I've moved on to the information items, which everybody, like Peter said, I repeat this, that the improvement agreement is in two different sections, we have planned the missing one, two, and then we talked, we talked, we explained the amendment to wire to the office. Community Network Meeting was today, as far as all scheduled announcements, we're meeting two guys, can I read that? Anybody else got anything they would like to add? I, nobody else got anything? I've got one thing I would like to add. Today is Councilman Castro's thirtieth birthday.
Oh, my gosh.
And, so, the considerate people we are, we've got a few special little gifts.
All right.
Marty, would you present them?
Sure.
I can't, mate. To Brad, please.
Use the card first.
Oh, thanks.
I'm a little scared now.
Thanks, it's always adding up to that.
I am.
I agree, too.
You're fast, I'm a little scared.
I don't frighten.
I hope it's loaded, whatever I see, the crackers.
Gee, thanks. You know exactly. I'm going on a trip with you. I need this stuff. Thanks, guys.
Preparation of all time.
Hey, you're on TV.
You guys are awesome.
There's more in here. There's something for everybody. There's some baby food, if your teeth didn't go out.
Can we, like, leave this here so I can hand it out to everybody else on beer, so the air goes? Makes you think I don't have a whole lot of...
Who doesn't want permission to have a birthday?
Well, thanks. Thank you. Yeah.
If nobody else has anything, I'd like to...
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion, second, the adjournment, they motioned to adjourn, I want to play a second.
I second you.
Joe, the... Motion, or meeting adjourned.
It is today.
Brad, you can just give my best.
You have to. Big bag.
That's still about to be done, but you've got it.
Oh.